July 11th Board of Commissioners meeting. A little unusual this evening. We're actually, our chairman is out of town and our vice chairman is unfortunately ill. And so, the vice chairman is actually participating by phone, but because he can't, hard for him to run the meeting, sitting on the phone. So, as a result, we need, the board needs to elect an interim chairman for this evening to run the meeting. So I will, at this point in time, accept nominations for interim chairman.
Mr. Manager, I nominate Scott Effer.
Nomination for Scott Effer. Any other nominations? Hearing none. We'll close the nominations, all in favor of Scott Effer. Say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Scott Effer is the interim chairman for this evening's meeting.
Thank you very much Commissioners, I guess. Really don't know, but again, welcome to the July 11th regular board meeting for the county commissioners. At this time, I would like to ask Commissioner Farr for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you tonight to give you glory for all your blessings and for the gift of your son for all our sins. We also come to you tonight to ask for knowledge to make the right decisions for our great county. We want to give thanks for the rain and sunshine that makes our crops grow, to feed all your children and your animals. We also ask for comfort for all the families that has had a great tragedy and help them heal and cope with the pain of losing their loved ones. In Jesus' name we pray. Evening.
I plead the allegiance and defiance of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just for all.
Thank you Commissioner Farr. At this time, you should have the agenda in front of you. I know there's some corrections and amendments we need to make to that. We need to remove item six and we need to add item 12G on the consent agenda, the general health fiscal 2223 fee schedule amendment request. I entertain a motion to approve those.
So Ben, make the motion.
Motion, Mr. Farr, second. Second by Mr. Barbie. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries five votes. At this time, we have public comment and I have one person that has signed up for public comment. Mr. Harold Schumacher? Schumacher? Is that Schumacher? Thank you, sir, and welcome.
Good evening. How are you doing? I spoke last month and I wanted to come back, kind of to add, I talked about some of the data from Union County, but I've got the data from Stanley County that we looked at at your death certificates. I wanted to bring you your own data. And I also wanted to respond to the comment that was made last time that I was here. In 2020, when there was no one vaccinated, you had 29 reported COVID deaths. Let me read you some of those ages. Eighty-five, ninety-four, ninety-nine, ninety-seven, ninety-two, ninety-eight, one hundred, ninety, eighty-eight, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-nine, and so forth. You can get a really good feel of what's happening here just by looking at the death certificates from that standpoint. In 2021, 62% of your residents got at least one COVID shot. 62%. So that leaves 38% unvaccinated. So the comment was made that all of the deaths in 2021 were unvaccinated. So if you take 38% of 29, then you would expect to have about 11 COVID deaths in 2021 if they were all the unvaccinated ones. And you would expect if the vaccine did its job, you'd have a lot less than 29. The actual number in 2021 was 91. Ninety-one. That's 10 times more than you expect, three times more than what you had in 2020 with no vaccine. There's only one explanation, there's only one thing that you can, any reasonable assumption on that is that the vaccine is making things worse. On top of that, Atrium was paid a billion dollars in public funds to help with this. 569 million in direct COVID funds, 439 million in MAP funds. So a billion dollars when they had a $7 billion in the bank. They're not doing you guys any favors. In the last month, they've now approved the emergency use vaccination for infants. And the reason I believe that they're pushing hard for kids is for their legal liability. They have to get approvals at all age groups to have full legal liability from the damage that they're doing. On the trial for the five to 11-year-olds, Pfizer's own data that they gave to FDA, they say that they have to vaccinate a million kids to save one life. For that one life, there'll be 102 cases of myocarditis. With a 20% mortality rate, it means you're going to kill 20 kids for every kid life that you save, theoretically save. It's despicable. With the infants in that trial, there were 4,524 kids that signed up for the trial. 3,000 of them dropped out and didn't finish the three shots. The trial should have ended there, but as I said, they needed the immunity. After the first round of shots, 34 kids got, had positive. In the vaccinated group, only 13 in the placebo group. Should have ended there. It didn't. Some are thinking after the second round and the third round, they ignored it all. At the end, they had 10 cases, seven from the placebo, three from the vaccinated group, and then they called this success and they based the approval on just 10 cases. Here's the other thing, because infants don't get COVID, they had to make up their own definition of COVID. And that was severe COVID was defined as an increase in breaths per minute or an elevated heart rate. So that's how they counted positive cases. It's incredible. Your most valuable resource is your kids. And so, I'm here just to ask you guys to look a little bit deeper into this and to stop these shots for kids. Informed consent is in the federal code and you're not doing it. Atrium's not doing it. I spoke to a mother, she was pushed hard for her 17-month-old to get vaccinated. They didn't tell her about the dangers, the risks, nothing about what happened in the trial. This is an emergency use authorization and kids don't need it. So just wanted you guys to protect your kids. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Can I say something to correct something that I believe he had mentioned earlier? Because I believe he was referring to what I said. I believe I had stated that since the vaccines that came out, the overwhelming majority of the people who were in the hospital and had died were people who were not vaccinated. That was my comment from the last time. We've had 277 deaths in Stanley County. And once the vaccines came out, the overwhelming majority of those people who had passed away were the non-vaccinated people. And that's all I wanted to correct.
That's only because of the definition in the United States of vaccinated. In the United States, we're the only country that does this. You have to be vaccinated, you have to survive for 14 days after the second shot. So that means if you die after the second day, you're considered unvaccinated. In Canada, 93% of their deaths are vaccinated because they don't wait, they don't say you have to make it 14 days past the second shot. It's an unbelievable thing that we're doing in the U.S. to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schudo. Howard, I need to back up just a minute. I think I said five oh on that vote for the agenda. It should be six oh with Mr. Almond. Commissioner Almond? Thank you. Next item presentation of Highway 73 and Millingport Road intersection, our presenter is Sean Efferson.
Good evening, everybody. Let's see if I can get the computer back on. Does anybody know what the password?
Yeah, it's up there on the thing.
Oh, is it?
No, I see it.
Ah, I see it. Capitalize the S. Capitalize the S. I was going for the user, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So, I'm here to talk about the intersection of NC 73 and Millingport Road. I know we've been here talking about this intersection before and there's been a lot going on with this intersection. You know, we implemented the always stop recently and now we're talking about a potential for a roundabout at that intersection. So I think some of this is information you've seen before, but you know, the intersection was high on our, or the highest on our crash rates for Stanley County. It's why we went for the always stop, something we could get in quickly, inexpensive, but was able to address the crash pattern, the crashes that were occurring at the intersection right away. So some of the other options that we do look at when we're looking at two-lane, two-way roadways with this type of crash pattern is a roundabout. They also address the crash problem, but they actually, in some ways, help traffic move a little better, but they have some negatives as well. We'll talk about those. So this intersection, because of its crash patterns, because of its crash history, does meet our criteria for an always stop, does meet our criteria for a roundabout. So some of the potential roundabout benefits, studies by the Federal Highway Administration show the 30% to 50% increase in traffic capacity. The reason for that is, you know, unlike an always stop where you have to stop when you get to the intersection, traffic can keep moving and keeps it flowing a little better. There are downsides to that same benefit. The benefit to the yield signs is, is the traffic doesn't have to stop, it can keep flowing. The negative to that is, honestly, roundabouts do not address crash patterns as well as an always stop. Typically with a roundabout, when you have crashes though, because everybody's going at a low rate of speed, they are, you know, property damage only, not severe. So you've got that benefit, but you typically will see more crashes with a roundabout. But they do allow traffic to move through the intersection better and so they do have that benefit. The reason we're even considering a roundabout here is, you know, the always stops address the crash pattern, but it is NC 73. It is a primary route. It is a route that carries a decent amount of truck traffic. And so we think that a roundabout is a potential option for this intersection. So I mentioned, you know, the safety facts, benefits of the roundabout. They do reduce crashes, 40% increase in total crashes, fatal injury crashes are down 79%. These are big benefits, but I said they're not necessarily as good as the always stop, but they are benefits. We do think that a roundabout is a viable option here though. So relatively quick presentation. You know, we're looking at, you know, about a $3 million cost to build this roundabout. We've identified a funding source. That funding source does require a resolution from the county in support of a roundabout for us to get those funds obligated. If y'all do want us to pursue a roundabout and do provide that resolution, we're looking at about three years before we can build it. Which again, is why that always stop was important to us to get in there. You know, we could do that quickly. We did that, you know, a couple of weeks. It addresses the crash problem, keeps the intersection safe. If, again, we pursue a roundabout, keeps the intersection safe for the next three years before we can build that roundabout. This is a rough concept design of what it would look like. The idea behind the roundabout would be, or this design is to push the entire roundabout away from that gas station. Taking the gas station is not an option we want, but it would, you know, be significantly cost prohibitive. We would push the roundabout, get my bearings, it'd be to the east, yeah, into that vacant land and allow us, like I said, not take the gas station. I can't remember what's in that building across the road from the gas station, but we wouldn't take it as well.
Question on that, can you go back?
Yep.
So people coming from the Locust side to Millingport, how would they get to the gas station? Is that whole road going to be just shaved off right there? And the same with the people coming?
So talking about over here?
Yes, how would they, yeah.
Yeah, so we would extend their driveway to connect to the new roadway.
And block off the...
And you would block off the access to the road right there, I guess?
Yes, yeah. We would tear out all the pavement on the old road except what was needed to get traffic into and out of the gas station.
And the people, the people coming from the Ridgefield side, they'd have to go around, go up, and how would they get in?
So, you're talking about...
People coming from the volunteer fire department.
Okay. Yes, they'd have to go through the roundabout. They could either come straight down and then turn left in, or they could turn left through the roundabout and then turn in. I guess actually that would be a...
They would go right, wouldn't they? Come down and go...
Yeah, they could come down, circle around the roundabout, and then turn in. Other way?
They would go right when they enter, they'd go right.
Geez, it's a Monday.
No, no, I'm just saying when they come down, they would go that way.
Yes, they would come down.
They'd take that off, they'd turn up and go around.
Yep. Yep.
Or they could go west on 73, go past the median and turn that way.
Correct, or they could come down here and turn left across, yeah. Access to the gas station would be pretty much exactly the same as this today. They would just have to, you know, they'd have a little bit, they would extend the driveway here, but over on this side, it would look almost exactly the same because we'd be tying back into existing 73 almost immediately. So access to the gas station would be pretty much exactly the same.
All right, any questions?
Then people, some people out there crying for a traffic signal, if I could make a comment. You know, we live in an area where people say they're very conservative and they don't want to spend tax dollars and they want to save lives. I've seen the presentation that Pates done, I think, three times. And the four-way stop not only saves lives, but it's a lot safer than a traffic signal. But a traffic signal is going to cost over $100,000 more plus $10,000 a year and it's not as safe as a four-way stop. And I just don't understand why people who are conservative doesn't, don't want to do that, save lives and save money at the same time, so.
Well, and honestly, a traffic signal would be significantly cheaper than a roundabout. But what we've found is, you know, when you install traffic signals when they're unwarranted, so the warrants for a traffic signal are a pretty large amount of volume on both the main line and the side street. And the reason for that is, is because then you expect it to not be green. When there's, when there's very little traffic on the side streets and you're coming through there on the main line on 73 all the time and it's green 95% of the time, you're not expecting it to be red and therefore you run a red light. I'd say the intersection of 218 and, 218 and 601, no, 218 and 200 is a good example of that. We put in a traffic signal at an intersection, may 10-plus years ago, there's been two fatalities there in the last five years and we're building a roundabout there next year. Because the traffic signal was unwarranted, it didn't meet our volume warrants for that, for a signal. We installed it anyways, we installed it at a time when roundabouts really weren't very common, it was over a decade ago. But again, it's an unwarranted signal. When you're on 218, it's green the majority of the time. So when it does turn red, you may not be expecting it. And you go through the intersection, somebody else comes through on green, you get two cars coming at a high rate of speed and they hit each other. Two fatalities there in five years. So we try, as much as we can, to not install unwarranted traffic signals because they, sometimes they work great, but you have that potential for them to not really address the problem and create worse problems. So, that's why we're not recommending a signal at this location. It doesn't meet the volume warrants for a traffic signal. Yes, it would cost less, but if it doesn't work and still have crashes and people die, then it wasn't worth it, even the $100,000, even the $2.89 million we'd save by going with the traffic signal.
Couple of questions.
All right.
Go ahead, Mike.
One question I had is, is there any accidents there at Millingport? Send me three cents of four-way stops, if we put in.
That I'm not sure about. I haven't heard of anything, but that doesn't mean they haven't happened.
Commissioner Law?
I was out 73 recently going to Concord and I noticed there's no rumble strips there, were not there the day I was headed to Concord. Has any been installed or are they going to be installed?
To my knowledge, no. The problem with rumble strips, we do them in cases, but they are loud. And so if there's residential areas nearby, if there's something nearby, we try to avoid them because when you're, if you're in that building, a house, wherever it may be, you'll hear it all the time, every time a car goes over it. They are something we do do from time to time, but if we can avoid them, to avoid those complaints in the future, we will.
I hope, it's my understanding, the first couple of days, they were like 50, 60 cars running right through without stopping.
That's what I've heard about too.
Yeah, and I don't know about any accidents, but I would sure hate for somebody to pull out and get creamed because they didn't see the stop sign.
Yeah.
So even though they may be loud, I was on Rocky River Road today and I went across rumble strips. I bet I went around three or four or five, you know, of these, what do you call them?
Roundabouts.
Roundabouts, yeah. Which, roundabouts after their end, I mean, personally, I'd rather see a roundabout than a four-way stop or a stop, stopping light.
Yeah.
But I am concerned until people, I'm very concerned and I would love to see on 73 rumble strips because there's going to be an accident when somebody runs that stop sign running 60, 65, then you're going to have some deaths. So, you know, I can get over the noise, but I'm very concerned about not having rumble strips. I mean, people aren't stopping. They're used to it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll talk to our folks about it and see what they think, but I know we've talked about it before.
Please do. And the second question I have, you said you found two or $3 million. May I ask where you found it?
So it's what we call, it's a high-impact, low-cost funds. We get about 1.4 million a year. We've got a little bit saved up that we haven't used over the last few years, so we would, so we don't have it today, but we would cobble that money together over the next couple of years, plus what we already have, kind of, that we didn't expend over the last year or two to get to that money. But because we wouldn't go to construction for, you know, two and a half, three years, we don't necessarily need that full $3 million today. We've got enough today to start on the design. By the time we got to right-of-way acquisition, the next year's funds, well actually, I guess it'd be this year's funds since we're in fiscal year 23, would be available. We'd buy right-of-way, move utilities, and then by the time we go to construction, our next one or two years with the funds would be available.
Any more questions?
I just want to mention and leak and help me out on this, and we have a local contractor that's going to take care of that bridge on Bethany Road. Is, and that construction is, I believe, started already.
Yep.
And they're going to do what they can to get it done as fast as they can.
May 23 is the contract open date, so they should have it open by May 23, May of 2023. Could be sooner, but per their contract, they're supposed to have it open by May 23.
That brings another question. Do you all contact Beth, is it Bethany Fire Department? Because they're having to go all kinds of ways to get across since the bridge is not there. It would be a good gesture if somebody with the DOT would at least give them quarterly updates on what's going on.
Yeah, I can get with our resident engineer, we should be able to do that. Okay.
Any manager?
I just needed, wanted some guidance forward. If you all are inclined to want to support them seeking funds for a roundabout, you know, we could put a resolution on your next agenda if that's something that you want or maybe some of you would rather have a traffic light versus a roundabout, but I'm just looking for some guidance in terms of, would you like to see some sort of resolution in the future?
I'm okay with it, I just, I don't know what Commissioner or Chairman Jordan, since he's not on the phone or president.
We always put a resolution together, we could talk about it.
I like it if you found the money without charging taxpayers again, let's do it.
Yeah, it's an existing funding source. So we're going to get the money either way. If it doesn't go to this project, then we'll look for another project to put it to.
You need that in the form of a motion as far as the...
No, I'm just looking for some guidance, so we don't, I didn't want to put it on there and then it'd be able not really be wanted, so.
I think it's, I think it's okay to put it on there during our August meeting. Okay. Any more questions? Thank you very much, sir. We certainly appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, item three, department head presentation, 911 Center. The presenter is Kyle Griffin, 911 Director. He might, Mike can answer your questions on that intersection, if any accidents out there. He would know.
I actually cannot recall of any, but I don't have the data in front of me. Well, good evening, everyone. I appreciate your time. I was asked to come tonight and speak about the Communications Department and the 911 Center. I have prepared a PowerPoint, we'll go through it. If y'all have any questions, please feel free to stop me. The Communications Department has several functions. We primarily exist to serve as the vital link between the citizens and the public safety agencies, as well as to quickly and accurately identify caller's locations so an appropriate response can be sent. We also provide needed support and coordination to public safety agencies as well as support agencies throughout the county. Our areas of responsibility include the 911 Call Center, addressing, as well as radios, technology and infrastructure that support that. The Communication Center is most known for the 911 Center, but without addressing, without radios and the infrastructure to support it, there really would be nothing down there. So the history of 911, the first 911 call was placed in February of 1968 in Haleyville, Alabama, which has been coined the home of 911. Fast forward several years to 1994, Stanley County opened the 911 Center that is currently in the basement. It's underwent several remodels since then. When the center went live in 1994, it was not consolidated, but consolidation efforts occurred between 1996 and 1998, which provided us with a fully consolidated public safety answering point. The Call Center is still located in the basement of the courthouse. And as you can see on the pictures there, if you've been down there recently, it's changed a good bit since those pictures were taken. Our backup center is currently located in the basement of Atrium Stanley behind the cafeteria.
Howard, is that you...
Absolutely not. I'm honestly not sure if I was born at that point in time. But I think that picture was circa maybe 1995, 94. So now, if, the one in the middle you may recognize, the one in the middle you may recognize is Angie Hagler who just recently retired from EMS, sitting on the left picture in the middle there. And actually, on the right side, there's several that are still dispatching for us and one that's planning to retire on the right come August. So, 911 over the years, the center, like I said, has been remodeled over the last 28 years. Our computer-aided dispatch system was installed in 1998. It served us quite well for the last 20-plus years. It was, the installation began in 1998 and was completed in 1999. The system we used was homegrown to North Carolina, was developed by a company in High Point. And since then, it's been bought out several times and underwent several mergers. This is the same system that we are looking at replacing in this current fiscal year. As call volume and radio traffic continues to increase, you can see on the left there, our call volume in 2000 versus our call volume in 2020, and then the last one there is projected for 2022. We should hit approximately 134,000 based on current call numbers as of this year. As that continues to increase, it's imperative that we have the staffing to man those consoles. And we're excited with the current budget approval that we'll be able to add an additional dispatcher to each shift. We're going to use our two permanent part timers on night shift and our call volume's a little less in the wee hours of the morning and put our new, two new full-time positions on day shift to increase that to five. The 911 Center is truly the backbone of public safety in Stanley County. Most every call for service begins in the basement of the courthouse. Someone calls 911, without someone there to answer it, they're not going to be able to get an ambulance for the loved one that needs care. The house that's on fire, the fire department's not going to be notified. And for law enforcement calls, critical information may not be given out, such as suspect information that they could be on the lookout while they're on the way to the call. Like I said earlier, the center is a consolidated center. We are the only 911 center in the county is basically what that means. So we're a full-service center. If you look at counties, larger counties, for example, Charlotte Mecklenburg, there's six different 911 centers there. You call 911 and you may get police and you need medic, so they're going to transfer your call. Anytime you transfer a call, there is a risk that we may lose connection. Anytime you transfer a call, there is a risk that we may lose connection, so we're fortunate here to have one center. You call us, you're gonna get someone that is familiar with Stanley County. When you say, hey, I'm down here by the big tree, I'm, I will assure you, someone in there knows what curve with the big tree you're talking about. We answer for all law enforcement agencies, all fire departments, rescue EMS, animal protective services, utilities for both small towns and the county, as well as DSS after-hours. We also have support in outside agencies that we work very closely with, North Carolina Wildlife, DOT, Highway Patrol, and probation and parole. So the job of a telecommunicator is no easy task. This job involves a great deal of multitasking. At any given moment, you could have, you may be juggling multiple tasks. You could have a caller on the phone that may be screaming that their child is not breathing, and you could have an officer on the radio calling in that he's trying to stop a vehicle. It's, it's a game of teamwork down there. Everyone must work together, the four that, that work in there. You can truly see the amount that they must communicate with each other in order to get the job done. Now, they have to be very detailed and skilled in their work. Even the smallest details about something they may have heard in the background on a call can really make or break the call. They gotta go with their gut feeling a lot, too. That nine-one-one hang-up call that, you know, someone's called and hung up, where it's an open line, the only thing you can hear in the background is rustling around. Sometimes you get, you know, you have to go a little extra mile, look up the phone number, do we have call history? Is there, is there a reason that we need to pay more attention to this one than saying, we don't know where they are? We've had instances where there's been violent crimes happening on the other end of those silent lines, and without that telecommunicator saying, hey, maybe we need to go check on that, then the victim may have not been found. And I can attest to both sides, being on the responder side as well as the, the communication side, that, you know, even though the telecommunicators are protected from the elements, they're in the basement of the courthouse. They're, you know, secured by doors, and it's not raining and cold and everything. The stress is the same as the, what they feel in the, the field responders see. You know, responders, a lot of times, they're dispatched to a call, their adrenaline spikes up, they get on scene, they handle it. The situation kind of resolves, the adrenaline goes down, paperwork, you know, time to start over again, right? You've got that, that flow of adrenaline. In the basement, a lot of times, the adrenaline spikes. You get that phone call, you dispatch help, and the phone rings again, and it just stays, your adrenaline stays up. There's not a lot of downtime or time to process that, process that, which leads to not getting closure on calls. So it's definitely, it takes unique people to do that job, and I'm fortunate that we have a great team of telecommunications at Stanley County. So if you'll see here, the types of calls processed, eighty percent of the calls that we process are law enforcement-related. Ten percent are for EMS, followed by six percent are fire-related, two percent are animal services-related, and the remaining two percent are other items such as DOT, or we participate with the senior center in the RUOK check program, which is a program that basically the senior citizens can sign up for to receive a call, to check on them, to see if they need anything, or, you know, make sure everything's going well that day. Spend a few minutes on the phone with them, you know, it kind of brightens their day up. On weekends, holidays, and after-hours, we call those folks for the senior center, which would attribute to that two percent there. The telecommunicator training process is quite lengthy. They are faced with multitudes of situations, day in and day out, and they gotta be prepared to respond to whatever call they may face. To prepare them for this, it takes several months of training. It could be three to four, sometimes six or more months. During training, they'll spend a bulk of their time with a training officer on the floor doing on-the-job training. But in addition to that, they will participate in classes such as CPR, medical dispatch training, basic telecommunicator training through the North Carolina Division of Criminal Justice Standards and Sheriff Standards, as well as North Carolina State Bureau of Investigation DCI training. They must maintain a wide variety of certifications as well, and they are constantly doing continuing education. Their certifications, once you tottle them up, it's about forty hours of CE each year, so it does take quite some time on them. Another area that we're responsible for is addressing, road names, things of that nature. Our database coordinator maintains the Master Street Addresses Guide, or IMSAG. That is basically a list of every single address in this county with their cross streets, with the appropriate response as far as the fire department, law enforcement, and EMS, based on this districts. And that's what we revert back to if the computers don't work, because from time to time, something may go wrong, and we gotta revert back to, hey, here's a map, here's a pen, here's a piece of paper. Our database coordinator also is the point of contact for all new streets and roads to be named, name changes, readdressing, new addresses, and subdivision streets. She works very closely with central permitting, as well as planning and zoning. And the last area I'll focus on is the radios, technology, and infrastructure. As we all know, technology is the backbone of our society today. We are responsible for the county radio system, which consists, consists of five towers that connect back to the bigger system in Charlotte, which is known as the Charlotte Urban Area Security Initiative Radio System, or UWSI. We coordinate the yearly maintenance and programming of the radios that are in Stanley County. There's approximately fourteen hundred radios that are issued to fire, law, EMS, and support agencies, whether those be mounted in a fire truck or the ones that they carry when they go in the house, including SCUSA. We coordinate the yearly preventative maintenance and programming on that. Takes about a month and a half every fall to touch every single one of those radios, get them account for, make sure they're still here, fix any problems that are with them, and things of that nature. Doing that every year helps with the purpose of ensuring that we are interoperable, and any changes that are made from year to year, they're kept up with in the radios. In addition to the radios, we work very closely with the IT Department to manage the public safety data system. Everything seems to connect back to CAD as the backbone of the system. So there's a mesh of interconnected systems, including the computer-aided dispatch, records management, jail management, mobile field reporting, and mobile data terminals, which are in the EMS trucks, as well as some of the fire trucks and all the police cars. These systems require very high availability, and as such, any outage with these is considered to be critical, and we work very closely with Chad and his team to ensure that they're available for our folks. In addition to that, we depend on a lot of different technology in the nine-one-one center. There's a range of software and hardware. We undergo constant monitoring of the status of these various systems and making sure that the updates are completed in a timely manner to ensure that we're able to provide the highest level of customer service to the citizens of the county. Along with IT, we manage about thirty different components, systems, softwares, connections, to ensure that the telecommunicators, the police officers, EMTs, paramedics, and firefighters have the tools that they need to respond. And I'd like to extend an invitation to each of you, come by and visit us. We'll give you a headset, we'll let you sit there with somebody. You can answer the phone if you want, answer the radio, or you can just sit there and listen. We'll, uh, we'll be glad to have y'all. Come see what, what, what truly happens down there. It's hard to explain it in a PowerPoint. It's hard to explain it without truly seeing it. But I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions, Commissioners?
I do have one. Is there any certain day of the week that's more calls than the other days?
So you would think weekends, right? But I'll tell you, Tuesday night is about as worse as what you think a Saturday night might be. So it fluctuates. It also depends on the season. Summer, everything picks up, especially on the weekends, versus, you know, a winter Wednesday night, so it fluctuates throughout the year.
Paul Moon, have anything to do with it?
Um, yes, yes, yes. I'm not superstitious, but those nights, it just seems to keep coming and coming.
We appreciate what you and your staff does for our county.
Absolutely. We appreciate y'all. Thank y'all.
Very quick, quick, yeah, quick, very, very, very good presentation. Thank you very much. And also, how many employees, I don't know if you guys have.
So we have, right now, there is, we've, we will be at eighteen full-time telecommunicators with the budget, plus two permanent part-time telecommunicators, and then we average about ten will-call telecommunicators. And will-call telecommunicators, maybe folks that have retired and said, hey, I wanna come back and work a few hours each month, or work at other agencies, and on their days off, they, they may come and pick up a shift here or there. People with training like that, it's, it's really hard to train somebody to be a part-time telecommunicator. The training is intense, and if they've got another job, it's, it, the schedules just don't usually work out. So we try to grab people that's part-time to help out as, as much as we can.
Any more questions?
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Kyle. Certainly appreciate it. Our next item is Central Illinois Workforce Development Board nomination for appointment. Our presenter is Ms. Candice Lowery.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, I come before you on behalf of the Central Illinois Workforce Development Board. Central Illinois Workforce Development Board has a vacancy for a private sector representative to represent Stanley County. Kristy Honeycutt with Preform Lawn Products recently resigned due to other obligations relative to work. Brett Barbie with Charlotte Pipe and Foundry is willing and able to serve and is being recommended for appointment to serve. Ms. Honeycutt's unexpired term ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. Included in your packet is Mr. Barbie's application for board's consideration, and we appreciate your consideration of this request for this appointment.
I make a motion that we appoint Brett Barbie to the position.
I have a motion by Commissioner Shudo, a second by Commissioner Barbie. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those? Motion carries six-o.
Thank you.
Next item is the Public Meeting Resolution, a USDA loan application for the West Stanley two-point-five-million-gallons expansion project. Our presenter is Mr. Dwayne Wingo, Utilities Director. Wingo?
Thank you, Chairman, and for board members. Stanley County is in the process of completing a USDA loan application for the expansion of the West Stanley wastewater treatment plant to two-point-five-million-gallons-per-day capacity. A USDA requirement for this process is to hold a public meeting. A public, a notice of the public meeting has been posted in the Stanley News and Press on June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two. This has been in advance of the Commissioner's scheduled meeting this evening. The purpose of the public meeting is to notify the citizens of the county of the county's intent to make an application for a USDA loan in order to obtain sufficient funding for the West Stanley wastewater treatment plant expansion. Assets acquired by the county may be encumbered to secure any loan obtained. A resolution is provided in your packet to permit the county manager to proceed with making the USDA loan application. The resolution is not an approval by the Stanley County Board of Commissioners to any terms or conditions of a USDA loan, but to, but only a requirement of the USDA loan application, loan application to process and move forward. Staff is requesting that a public meeting or public hearing be opened for the discussion. Any and all comments or question, after any and all comments and questions are addressed to the satisfaction of the Stanley County Board of Commissioners, staff requests the public hearing or meeting be closed, and a vote on acceptance of the resolution be presented. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Any questions for Director Wingo? All right, hearing done. At this time, I would open the public hearing for the USDA loan application for the West Stanley two-point-five-million-gallon expansion project. Anyone here to speak either for or against? Hearing done, I will close that public hearing. All right, gentlemen, what's the pleasure of the board for the resolution?
I make a motion, we support the resolution.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Shudo. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner LaHong, sorry, Commissioner O'Malley beat you to it. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those? Motion carries six-o. Thank you. All right, our next item is ZA twenty-two dash ten, Terry and James Peck, rezoning two-eight-five-two-five, NC twenty-four slash twenty-seven, Albemarle. Our presenter is County Manager Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Pinching for our planning staff this evening. Both rezoning items this, this evening are items that you tabled from previous meetings. This one happens to be the Terry and James Peck request to rezone twenty thousand three hundred and sixty-eight square feet of a six-point-one-five-acre parcel located at twenty-eight-two-fifty-two, NC twenty-four, twenty-seven. When this item came back, before you previously, they were seeking to rezone less than twenty thousand square feet, and there were some concerns about repair area for septic and things of that nature, and so they have gone back and, and re-looked at the, the, the property in terms of what they were gonna deed off into a separate parcel. And so now, it's gonna be twenty thousand three hundred and sixty-eight, and I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have regarding this rezoning. And you already held the public hearing, so you can take action. Yeah. You've had the public hearing for both of these items this evening.
Any questions for County Manager?
Mr. Chairman?
Sir, Commissioner?
I make a motion that we approve the rezoning for Terry and James Peck based on the fact that they've extended the amount of property that this house sits on, which will give them ample space for a repair system.
I have a motion by Commissioner LaHong, a second by Commissioner Barbie. County Manager, do you need that language written in that motion?
Yes, that would be great. Yep, that's not specifically for me, but for the planning, planning can, it helps to, our. Jenny prefers that language as well.
I move to approve the rezoning request at two-eight-two-five-two, North Carolina twenty-four, twenty-seven highway, Albemarle, from RA to R twenty, because this property is, property is located in a growth area, and it's served by public water. This rezoning is consistent with the land use plan.
Okay, you heard the motion. You got the second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those? Motion carries six-o.
It's all right. You're good.
Our next item is ZA twenty-two dash eleven, Daryl Thomas, Sherwood Forest rezoning, RA to R twenty, and again, our presenter is County Manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, this is a rezoning that you previously had before you to go from RA to R twenty. These is thirty-three lots. Sherwood Forest subdivision's off Martin Road, which Martin Road is off NC seven forty. I guess just north of Baden, going towards New London, or just past New London, going into the town limits of Baden, depending on which way you're going on seven forty. There were some questions. There's maps of this property of the subdivision on page sixty-one through sixty-three in your packet. There's also a map of Martin Road, and just sort of generally get a context of where the subdivision is on seven forty, on page, pages sixty-seven through seventy in your packet. The last time we were here, one of the items that was brought up was access to public utilities. There is a letter, it's page eighty-one in your packet, from Stanley County Utilities Director Dwayne Wingo, basically saying that water and sewer can be provided to this subdivision. The developer would have to, you know, do an extension of the service from the development to our line, our sewer line down at the airport. But it's feasible for us to collect that sewer at that point and transmit it to the city of Albemarle. So there's no issues in terms of capacity in our system or at the Albemarle Treatment Plant. And so if the developer extended it, which is typically the case when developers do projects, they'll extend water and sewer to, and they'll bear the cost of those, those improvements, and then as long as they build them according to our, our specs, we'll take them over. And so as long as they are able to do that, there is water and, and sewer certainly available to serve this property. And that letter's on page eighty-one again, and I'll be happy to answer any other questions the board may have.
Any questions?
County Manager, if it were approved from RA to R twenty, does the owner or developer. County Manager, if it were approved from RA to R20, does the owner or developer, do they have to tap on to water and sewer?
As long as they can keep the lots, they wouldn't have to do sewer if they could perk the lots. Obviously, the lots would have to perk, and they would have to be large enough. I think all these lots in this subdivision, based on the, the, the way the subdivision was platted, they were, they were all in excess of 20,000 square feet. And so, you know, they certainly could do, you know, perk the lots. There's water available on 740, and so, from a, you know, would they have to connect to the utilities? Probably not, but I mean, I guess they could drill a well, but I mean, it would be, I think it would be really difficult to build subdivision with those sized lots and have wells and septics on the lot.
I'm more concerned about septic than I am water.
Yeah, septic, I mean, at 20,000 square feet, obviously, that was our concern with the previous rezoning was, you know, would it be large enough for, you know, a repair area? And so, at, you know, 20,000 plus square feet for each of these lots, you know, I think these technically, if it'll perk, that's the other question is, how many of those lots would actually perk? Which you're gonna, you know, until you get a land person out there, you know, to environmentalists, to get out there and actually, you know, look at it and, and get our environmental health folks out there to actually go out there and do the perk test, you're really not gonna know how many of those 33 lots would actually perk. You know, they may all, but I do, I do know there's some, some of the soils in that area aren't generally great, and so, my guess is they probably all wouldn't perk.
County Manager, would it be possible to put a restriction that if we do this zoning, that they have to go to the water and sewer?
I'm gonna defer to our county attorney.
Commissioner Fur, I really do not know. I wish the planning staff were here. I do not know the answer to that.
I think in order to do that, you'd have to do a conditional zoning, to put stipulations on it.
Well, the reason I was asking, because he brought up about the one we just done, that was an existing house. This is going into being a subdivision, and this is not the same scenario. So, that's why I'm wondering, is that, is that something, you know, this, that's an issue that I want. I'm like him, I'm more concerned with the sewer than I am the water.
I would tend to agree with Commissioner Efer that I don't think, if you rezone this, you can't put, you're either, you're rezoning it to do it or you're not. I don't think you can put, can't put conditions on it or stipulations. I think if you did conditional zoning, which the applicant could do, but they haven't as this, this isn't contemplated as conditional zoning, but they could do, that, that point, you could put that condition on there to connect to public sewer. So, I mean, it's, you may want to, I would think you'd have to deny this, and then they would have their, their, you know, have an opportunity six months from now to come back with conditional zoning.
I agree with you. I think you'd have to deny this request and send it back to planning zoning.
I don't think you can table this, because it'd be coming back as a different type of rezoning.
It's a totally different.
Correct, correct.
They would have the conditions that they would set aside that they would agree on.
Correct.
Take it back to planning zoning and then come back here. If you do a conditional zoning, you're talking about Commissioner Fur.
I'd like to, this, this thing was approved by the planning board, and it's, I mean, the six oh, wasn't it?
It was.
Yeah, it was approved six oh by the planning.
By the planning board, yes.
The planning board, and then it was tabled and it, they answered the questions we had last time about the, if there was sewer hookup out there and everything.
Now, the, keep in mind, the sewer is not at the property. They're gonna have, the developer will have to extend.
Correct, he had, but it's available there.
A collection system to meet our transmission system, but we have the capacity in our system and at the plant in order to be able to serve them. Correct. And that's on page 81.
Do we know how far of the sewer connection?
How far they would have to build?
Yes.
I'm not sure Duane addressed that in that letter or not. He did not. And I don't, without, without having an accurate map and a GIS person, I wouldn't wanna tell you this evening how many feet it is.
I'd like to make a motion. I move that the request to rezone 33 parcels off Martin Road, New London from RA to R2 be approved. This project eliminates a non-conforming lot situation and allows the development of housing on existing parcels in a growth area with public water and sewer available.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Shudo. I hear a second. Motion dies for a lack of a second. Do I have another motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Fur.
I make a motion, request to rezone parcel 33 off Martin Road, New London, RA to R20 be denied. This part, project should be required to combine the lots and meet the current RA zoning district requirement of the 40,000 square foot lots in the watershed area.
I have a motion to deny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Almond.
Gentlemen, I think that, I think maybe Mr. Thomas's peer, I don't know, you don't have, I mean, you've held your public hearing, so you don't have to, you don't have to, but if you wanted, the board was so inclined to wanna listen, hear him, you could.
Yes, sir. Mr. Thomas, come on up, sir.
How y'all doing today? I just wanted to say, if I don't get approved, I can be on the lot anyway, just like the Miltonport subdivision. I'm just trying to do it the right way, because the 33 lots in the 14th Amendment saying a corporation is considered a person. So, really, if you wanna get technical about the rules that override everything, all, if all the lots are owned by a different person, I don't even have to come to this board. And technically, they own by a different corporation because they got a different parcel number. So, I don't even know why you even asking for R20. I mean, I really don't have to. Each, each lot's got a different tax ID number. So, that mean they own by a different person. And the origin say that I'm exempt from the watershed rule if they own by a different corporation, which they are. So, I don't understand. I mean, you asked the proof about they're gonna tap in, it gonna tap in where the fire department tapped in. Wingo, he showed me, I forgot how far, where the fire, where the fire thing gonna tap in, that's where mine gonna tap in. So, Baker, to be honest, if I can't get sewer, the $25 million, fire department can't get it. So, they, they can't get it if I can't get it. And Governor Cooper already approved that. So, why, I mean, they don't need the 25 million fire training thing. They hit the same tap in. And you do your homework, each lot you own by a different parcel number. So, I don't understand, but it ain't foremland. It ain't multi-million dollar houses, it affordable living, it gonna get people somewhere to live. So, I don't understand the denial. They ain't have a subdivision on 740 in 30 years. And just like one of y'all said last month, I don't know why they doing the RA, R20 thing. And people still, I agree with y'all, why, why I'm here. It ain't gotta be here. And that's the part I don't like.
Currently RA, correct?
Yeah, RA right now.
Hey, it's RA, you don't need.
You can read, I don't even, you can read in the origin, they own by a different person. I mean, you said you wanted to make sure the septic tank was there, it there.
I wanted to make sure sewer was.
I meant the sewer.
Sewer was there at the property.
Yeah, it there.
They couldn't tell me last time.
Yeah.
They tell me now that it's located to where it can be tapped on to.
Tap in, yes.
But it's your expense.
It ain't my expense, my investors' expense.
Thank you, sir.
I just don't understand. I mean, it ain't, it ain't Miltonport, it ain't foremland. But everybody said you were gonna be against it anyway. The whole city said.
Alright, I have a motion on the floor. Commissioner Fur, a second by Commissioner Almond. To deny, any more discussion?
Excuse me, sir? If you, if you rezone it from RA to R20, you'll reduce the lot size, absolutely. And there's a, and I hate that the planning department's not here, but there's some, there's an issue with it, non-conforming, because it's in a watershed area, and so, he, he would have gotten 33 lots as a, if it was rezoned to R20. He will get less than that, obviously, with it being RA.
Quick question, maybe this is for Jenny. If this is denied, is there a certain time limit before he can come back?
Yes, sir.
So?
Six months. Six months. He can bring it back in six months. He can bring it back as another rezoning, or he could go the conditional zoning route if he would, he chose to.
How long, how long does that take?
Conditional rezoning process? I mean, they would date with staff, create the conditions, go to the planning board, and it would come to us. I mean, it'd probably take a couple of months at least.
So, what's, what if this motion fails?
You're gonna have to dispose of it some way or another. You gotta vote on it, whether you either vote for it or you vote against it. I mean, at this point, you, or you table it for another month. I mean, you could take, keep tabling it, but I mean, at some point, you're gonna have to get, you know, obviously, you have to get closure on this item. You mean, so if this fails, then you're.
The question is, my motion, I guess it was never voted on.
Well, it never got a second, so you can't.
It never got a second.
It has to have a second to get voted on.
So, that's still out there.
Well, it's not.
I mean, it's not out there, but that's not been.
You'd have to get a second to have it.
Correct, correct, correct.
If this fails, you could make another, you could make the motion again, and somebody could second it, and you could have a vote on it. I don't know if it would pass or not, but, you know, if you, if it doesn't, if you don't vote in favor or if you don't vote for it, then the board will likely table it until your August meeting and take it up again. But at some point, you're gonna have to dispose of the item.
Commissioner Shudo, if, in a, in RA zoning, the minimum lot size has to be 30,000 square feet. This property has, is in a watershed, so being in a watershed, it has to be at least 40,000 square feet. So, that he's gonna lose lots. He can recombine those lots, but he will lose, you know, however many lots, probably two for one, so instead of 33, he might wind up with, with 16. But requirements for the watershed is 40,000 square feet, where the requirements for RA is 30.
Any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion to deny? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
That motion passes by one. Okay, our next one is USDA Interpretation Resolution, and our presenter is Commissioner Lawhan.
The USDA recently announced it will interpret the prohibition of discrimination based on gender in Title IX to include discrimination based on sex orientation or gender identity. Let me stop there a minute and put, put in layman's term. Gender identity is when a male identifies as a female, or when a female identifies as a male. This interpretation will impact funding associated with the Food and Nutrition Program for eligible elementary and secondary education students. If the local systems do not comply with the new ruling or interpretation. So, in other words, what they're saying is, if you don't go along with what we're saying, the USDA, then we're gonna withhold funds for, I believe it's for reduced lunches, free lunch programs, which is a very expensive proposition. There's a resolution that each of us have had for probably four or five days, hopefully you've read it. And I want to point out that it's a discrimination against non-transgenders. By doing this, it's discriminating against non-transgenders, students, teachers, and other faculty members. So, if everybody would look at the two-page resolution, if you have questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them. But I hope you'll support this resolution, because they're using it, money to determine whether or not, if we don't do what the USDA ruling says, then someone's gonna have to come up with lots of money. It's not about the money, it's about the children. And if I had a student in school this day and time, and I do have a granddaughter, I'd be very concerned about this USDA ruling. We right now, is my understanding, in a comment period time. And so, you as a citizen need to tell your US Congressman, write them a letter, and your US Senators, y'all need to stop this ruling that USDA has put out. Any questions?
Any questions for Commissioner Lawhan?
Yeah, I would almost like to have you read the resolution, because you have things in here about religious rights and everything else. I think it's more of a, something like this, that it should be read for the public.
You're welcome to read it if you would, Peter. Now, I can read it, but, I mean, it's two pages of where it has and where it falls.
Yeah, it is.
But if you've got questions about certain sections, please give them to us, and we'll be glad.
I can, I can read it, if that's okay.
Okay, read it.
Can staff read it? Yes.
If you don't mind, let staff read it, if you're okay with it.
Because I have some concerns with, and I just want the public to know, to hear the whole thing, rather than a recap of it.
You all set, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Forward your, sir.
Yes, sir. I will do my best to read this without stumbling around here. Resolution of Stanley County Board of Commissioners regarding the US Department of Agriculture, USDA, interpretation of discrimination based on sexual orientation and the impact of funding associated with the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance SNAP program. Whereas the US Department of Agriculture, USDA, Food and Nutrition Services, FNS, recently announced it will interpret the prohibition on discrimination based on sex found in Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972, and in the Food and Nutrition Act of 2008 as amended Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, SNAP, formerly the Food Stamp Program, and I'm not gonna read seven USC, to include discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity. And whereas the USDA further suggested federal food and nutrition funding for eligible elementary and secondary education students will be withheld if local school systems do not comply with the new ruling, and whereas, is well established that the United States Constitution protects a parent's right to make decisions concerning the care, custody, and control of their children, including the right to make decisions concerning the upbringing, education, and care of the child, and such rights have been recognized as fundamental rights protected by the due process clause of the 14th Amendment. And whereas, the aforementioned USDA ruling does not adequately protect school, students, or staff who have religious reservations concerning the implementation of policies associated with sexual orientation and gender, gender identity. And whereas, the USDA ruling is particularly problematic with regard to the use of certain school facilities, including school restrooms, school locker rooms, and showering facilities for the following reasons. One, the USDA ruling does not appear to adequately protect the privacy rights of non-transgender students who may be uncomfortable in using these facilities in the presence of students of differing biological sex. Two, the USDA ruling failing, fail, fails to adequately respect the First Amendment rights of non-transgender students under the Free Exercise Clause. for whom changing clothes or using the bathroom in the presence of students of differing biological sex would violate tenets of their religions, a group which is likely to include, among others, many Jewish, Muslim, and Christian students adhering to teachings of their respective religions. Three, the USDA ruling, by prohibiting even the most basic inquiry into a student's gender identity before using a restroom, could prevent a school from punishing acts of misconduct in a restroom, and does not adequately consider legitimate safety concerns for students. Four, to the extent the USDA's new ruling permits or requires the availability to students of alternative restrooms or changing facilities, no funding has been identified by USDA, the Federal Department of Education, or other federal entities, which would be available to our local school system to modify current school facilities, instead constitutes a unfunded mandate which will burden the taxpayers of Stanley County. And whereas, the USDA ruling does not appear to provide adequate protection for the First Amendment rights of students and school staff, because they compel that students be addressed by their preferred gender pronouns, which such compelled speech may violate the religious beliefs of the students or staff members. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners is committed to the safety and well-being of all students, and strongly opposes bullying, harassment, or mistreatment of any student, but observes that such conduct is already prohibited by existing law and policy. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners wishes to express its support for the First Amendment rights of all students and school staff, and further to express its opposition to the recent USDA interpretation. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Stanley County Board of Commissioners as follows. The Board of Commissioners hereby expresses its opposition to the USDA's recent interpretation as currently contemplated for the reasons stated herein. And two, that the Board of Commissioners expresses its support for the First Amendment rights of citizens, including the right to free exercise of religion, and the rights of parents to direct upbringing and education of their children.
Thank you, County Manager. Any questions?
Yeah, well, yeah, I just wanna make a comment, and then I'm not gonna beg on it. You know, there was, there were 19 children and teachers who were murdered at a school in Texas a little over a month ago. We're not talking about that, but we're talking about this instead. And to me, as I read this, it has some flaws, because first of all, you're basically saying that a public employee, based on their religious belief, can discriminate against students based on their sexual orientation and their gender identity. You're saying students, you're saying school employees can discriminate against those, and you're worried about, um, you know, the whole thing about a guy dressing in the girls' bathroom and stuff like that, and... You know, if you're a gay student, how does that affect a gay student, a male gay student changing in a male locker room, or using the male, you know, the male restroom? I mean, it's no, really no, no different there. And I don't know, I just think this, this is very flawed, and I just cannot support this. And there's a wall of church, separation of church and state, and by throwing this all with the religious beliefs in there, for public employees to be able to discriminate based on that, I just cannot support this resolution.
Thank you, sir. Most pleasure to the board.
Make a motion that, uh, we approve this resolution.
All right, a motion by Commissioner Lawhan, a second by Commissioner Barbie. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay. Aye.
All right, next item.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one comment.
Yes, sir.
I hope the school superintendent and the school board will voice their concerns if they have them.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next item is the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference and Legislative Gold Conference Delegates. The presenter is County Manager Andy Lucas.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this item, typically, every, each year, you have somebody who represents you at the business meeting of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. The meeting actually this year will be held in Concord, because the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Conference will be in Concord, uh, at the Embassy Suites. Um, and so, their convention center over there. So this would be that Saturday, August 13th, um, at 2 o'clock. And, um, they're also asking for a, um, delegate for the Legislative Goals Conference. And I don't have that information. Actually, that, that information is November 16th through the 17th. I think Peter represented us at a Goals Conference at one point in time. Um, and I think that, um, former Commissioner Morgan, uh, former Commissioner Burleson, have represented us at Legislative Goals Conferences in the, in the past, so, um, anyway, I'll stop there and answer any questions, but really, just looking for two, two representatives. One for the business meeting of the, their, of their annual meeting, which happens to coincide with the, the, um, conference in August, uh, on the 13th, and then one for the Legislative Goals Conference that won't be till November. Uh, it's usually held in, um, it says Wake County here. A lot of times in the past, it's been in Durham at the, trying to think of the name of that hotel, it's right there off of 540, um, Sheraton Imperial. But it says Wake County here, so I don't, I don't wanna know specifically where exactly they're gonna hold it in Wake County. I'm sure there'll be more details coming, but it's the November 16th and 17th.
All right, any volunteers?
I want to.
All right, or both of them?
I think you went last year. Uh, I'm gonna want to go with someone else, or whatever it may be.
Mike said he would volunteer. Which one wants to go to Cabarrus County? Which one wants to go to Wake?
I'm fine with either.
All right, Mike said he would go to Cabarrus if you'd go to Wake.
I'll get it.
Okay, we need that in form of a motion, sir.
Yes, sir, because Clark will have to send something back to the association.
I'll make a motion that Commissioner Barbie attends the August 13th, 2:00 PM meeting, which is the North Carolina Annual Association County Commissioner Meeting. And that Commissioner Almond attends the Wake County Legislative Gold Conference, November 16th, 17th.
Have a second? Second by Commissioner Barbie. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Barbie and Commissioner Almond. Thank you very much. Next item, uh, is Convention and Visitors Bureau Delegate Appointment. The presenter is County Commissioner, County Manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this item is for an appointment. You have one vacant appointment to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Typically, that appointment's always been our Aggregative Center Director. Uh, and so, when Doshia Swerengen transitioned from Aggregative Center Director to the Health Department for a job there, we, the, there became a vacancy, uh, as a result of her moving. And so, um, asking the board to kindly consider appointing Amanda Griffey, the new Aggregative Center Director, well, not necessarily new, but, um, the most recent Aggregative Center Director, uh, to serve, uh, on the, um, and the county's, um, seat on the Convention and Business Bureau. And Bob Bremberg, uh, in our Planning Department, actually fills the other seat. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? County Manager.
I make a motion, we nominate Amanda.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Does it require that those two positions are county employees?
No, it does not. And it, you have typically, in the past, and had at least the Aggregative Center Director, just because the Aggregative Center Director is so involved in putting heads in beds in this community. I mean, it's probably one of the, from a facility perspective, it's probably one of the, um, probably the facility that puts the most heads in beds, um, with all the competitions and other things it has out there. So that's typically been the case. I think Candice was, uh, an appointee for a number of years, and then, and then Doshia, and, um, after that. Uh, the other seat has varied. Bob's currently in that role, but, um, that you've, you've put other folks, just community members, on that board in the past. And so, Amanda's willing to serve, but, I mean, I'm sure if you wanted to appoint someone else, you wanted to table this and find someone else who wants to serve on that, uh, I don't, you know, certainly, that's, you know, at your discretion.
What's the term?
I believe it's a two-year term, if I'm not mistaken. It's a three-year term? It's a three-year term, sorry. Clerk, three-year term.
Do we have any volunteer applicants? We don't. And they just basically come through? Chris? Personally, I, you know, I don't have a problem with either one of them, but I would like to see at least one of those positions to be solicited from our citizen base, not county employees.
And like I said, the one that Bob's in, I don't think traditionally has been a county employee. I think it just, Bob was willing to serve and, um, has an interest in that area, and he, you all appointed him, but I don't, it hasn't been our Planning Director and Aggregative Center Director over the years. Ag Center Director has been typically one that's been appointed, but not certainly both county employees. I, I certainly understand your, your position on that.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Shudo. Do I have a second? Second, Commissioner Fur. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, can we vote on each one at a time?
It's just one. Amanda, you, we have, we have two, we have statutory.
But you had Bob and Amanda.
No, 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 Bob's term hasn't expired. I'm just, I was just letting you know Bob serves in the other, other spot that you all have appointed to that board.
And again, I would like to see us try to get a citizen that's not an employee.
So the option would be to table it and get other applications and bring it back to you at a future meeting? If you, if you, if that, that's, the board's so inclined to do that.
Do you know when Bob's term is up? Probably not.
I don't, Tyler, do, do you know when Bob's term ends? I, I don't, I don't have that information in front of me.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor, and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Six oh. All right, next item is Consent Agenda. The one item that we added, General Health, year 2022, '23, Reschedule Amendment Request. Most pleasure.
I make a motion, we approve the Consent Agenda.
I have a motion by Commissioner Shudo. Do I have a second? Second, Commissioner Lawhan. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Six oh. Uh, Board Comments, Announcements, and Committee Report. Uh, Mr. Shudo, I'll start with you, sir.
Yeah, real quick, was down at the, with my son at the farmer's market down in Charlotte, a pretty big one, and I saw two. Gregory knows all about the Stanley County vendors down there, that Windy Hill Farms up in, um, Richfield, what is it, New London? Richfield, somewhere up there, I think, was up there. And then also, you had Celtic Frost, Celtic Frost Herbs, had a locust. They were down there, and Gregory's really getting into the plants and stuff, and that guy was just really, really knowledgeable. So good for them for expanding the Stanley County base outside the thing, and just, I'll make it quick. I was at, I was thinking of Commissioner Lawhan when I was coming home from New York. I stopped into Middleton, Virginia, to take a break and get some gas, and I pulled in, and Middleton, Virginia was either formed in 1760 or 1790. And right when I got to the Circle K, there's this whole clump of houses together in that light green and light tan thing that looked like these developments that they're putting, and wanna put all around Stanley County, the area. And that's an old town, so I went for a walk down the town, and Andy, you have to hear this story twice. So there's this guy out there watering his yard, and I talked to him. I said, "Man, what's the deal with that?" He says, "Yeah, they're building four or five of them out there, and they're just, you know, putting the houses on top of each other in these developments." And he goes, you know, "This is, this was a town where they had the Cedar Creek, I think it's Cedar Creek Civil War Battle, the Shenandoah Valley." And he goes, "A house next to me, which was an old log cabin," he goes, "That's the first house built in this county still." And they said, and, and he goes, "It still has a blood stain like this big from a Civil War soldier there." And I said, "Where are the people coming from?" Because I was coming from the New York West area. He said, "They're coming from DC," and I didn't realize that was like an hour outside of, of DC, so the people are, you know, that, so that's something we have to deal with. And Bill, I did drive out there to, um, the place behind Morgan Motors, I mean, um, Tim Marburger with the development out there. Yeah, and that's a lot of houses going up pretty close together, so that's something. You know, things change, things change, and just we look at our land use plans and developments and stuff like that. But anyway, that's a, likewise, Stanley County issues are an issues around the country that small towns are dealing with.
Thank you, Commissioner Shudo. Commissioner Barbie?
I got a little bit of an update on the ribbon-cutting ceremony we're having at, uh, Development Park out in Locust, Stanfield area, for the American Racing Hitters Corporation tomorrow, so. Like to show a good crowd out there, whack them a bit.
10 o'clock, I believe, right?
10 o'clock.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Fur? Commissioner Lawhan?
What's today's date?
July the 11th?
July the 11th. Three years ago was the first time we met anyone with American Racing Hitters, to the date, which we met them at the new industrial park. So it takes a while to cultivate an industry, especially one that's gonna move from Long Island, New York. So I do encourage anybody that can attend, like Mike, please be there. These are great people. 62, 63 jobs is what they're gonna commit to. And some will come from Long Island, but they'll be hiring a lot of welders because the type of manufacturing they do, they manufacture exhaust systems, which requires a lot of spot welding, or, I'm not, I'm not a welder, so I don't know how to describe it, but. Interesting business, and I'm thankful they're coming to Stanley County. And Peter, thank you. I didn't know you ever thought about me, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Lawhan. Um, one thing I have, um, right now in Locust, there's a state Dixie Youth Baseball Tournament going on. There's eight counties, I believe. West Stanley, South Stanley, North Stanley, Mount Pleasant, Moore County, East Lincoln, West Lincoln, and Kings Mountain. All those guys are in Stanley County for the next few days, spending money and getting to know Stanley County, so. I was out there Saturday and worked a little bit. I worked all day, actually, and talked to a lot of local folks, and they were really impressed with Stanley County. Some of them staying here in Alamo Marl, so, again, I'd like to welcome all those. Our next meeting would be, let's see, August the 8th. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion second?
Commissioner Almond, I hope you're feeling better. All those in favor say aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you.